Call the meeting in order, roll call please.
Mayor Rankin?
Here.
Councilmember Wal- or Mike Saffron-Walter?
Here.
Councilmember Woolbridge?
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Here.
Councilmember Billings?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Wal?
Here.
You have a form.
Well, we're not Phoenix, but we're going to stand for a moment of silence, remembering everything that's going on in this world today, all the love we can give out there. So let's do that, and then we'll have for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is the first call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may have staff to review matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, a member of the council shall not discuss or take any action on any matter during an open call of the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion legal This time I have a request from Carly Adam.
It's my bad writing. That would be Kathy Adam from 240 East Ruggles here in Florence. And I just wanted to say briefly, over the past few months since the library and community center have been open, I have attended personally at least three sessions there of varying nature. And I know there was a lot of conversation when you all were voting to build that. And I just wanted to give you my personal feedback that it has been invaluable and a wonderful gathering place for the town. I attended Pedro Guerrero's PBS screening special, and there was a really excellent town hall meeting that Chief Hughes sponsored for the entire community. And I know Councilwoman Valerie Woolbridge was there. And unfortunately, it was very poorly attended, but I commend him for sponsoring it and having his whole team there that we could meet and understand his policing strategies and discuss our problems. And, you know, there's not a member of the community that doesn't have some issue with the police. And I just encourage, I hope we have more of them in my community, I'm speaking to the community now, please attend this because I think you would find out, it's so valuable. It was wonderful. And then there was an American music presentation there, and it was standing room only. So I know you get reports that there's a lot of activities, but you really need to go to somebody's and see the turnout. I mean, there are people I've never seen before, and I go to a lot of events, and it's just terrific. My last thing is that I'm on the home tour committee, and Brian Hughes and his team have been leading the effort. We've been working hard for a whole year, and I think we have an excellent home tour this year. We have the Clum House, which is a real plum to have to our addition, and I think our visitors will be thrilled to see it. It's very historically significant. We also have a costume show going on at the Pinal County Museum at the same time, and our arts commission is sponsoring a quick draw art contest, not guns, but to draw something within 90 minutes, which they will then sell. So I just wanted to mention that, and please encourage everybody to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Carly. Are there any other members of the public like to speak? She no movement, I'll call, close call of the public. Lisa?
Presentations. Item A, Years of Service Award presented to Herb Padilla III for 20 years of dedicated service. Mayor?
They tell me, Herb, come on up here. They tell me the cordlet's not working, so we're going to have to use this here. Okay, Dan. Tonight, this guy right here, 20 years of legitimate time, according to the record books. And I don't know how many years before the records started being kept, but he's been a part-time employee for our Parks and Recreation Division, just part-time. 20 years of service to the town. We've had a lot of programs that you put on down there, the open gym, helping the kids. I get to watch you during the basketball season for the kids all the time. And it's just been great when people put this much time and effort into the youth of our community, because the youth is the base for our community. That's what we're all here for, to make them better. Tonight, after 20 years, thank you very much. We appreciate it very, very much. You got something you want to say, people?
Um, sure.
Okay, well, come on up and talk about him.
Um, well, Herb's been doing an open gym program for over 20 years, like more than that because he was volunteering for about two, three years, right Herb? And some of you guys still remember, he was doing open gym back at Old Main before it burnt down, as we were discussing earlier, and then we moved it all over to the K-8 gym. But yeah, he's been here for a while, and he's always done a great job, whether it's our youth basketball, our open gym program, like Mayor Hussein, and he's a great asset to our department. So I just want to congratulate you, Herb.
We do have a little bit, you know, 20 years is a long time. You're almost as old as, well, no, I remember when you were born, so you're not as old as I am. But, no, you'll never catch up. We'll just keep going. We have a race, okay? And we'll just keep going. But we've got a plaque here for you, and it says, "Making a Difference in Florence." Approved Herb A. Padilla III for your dedicated years and outstanding service and commitment. Thank you for everything you have done to truly make Florence, make a difference in the town of Florence, 20 years of service." And there's your plaque for that. Now, the one thing that Mama probably want, this gift card. She'll probably want to get that one. But Herb, again, on behalf of the town council and our town administrative staff, thank you very much for the years. The next 20 will be just as fun.
Yeah.
Okay?
Presentations, item B, Presentation on the Arizona Cities and Towns Budgets. Your input matters. Mr. Garcia?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Tonight, we have just a real quick presentation for you. It's a video that the League of Arizona Cities and Towns put together, and as we're getting into our budget season, there's a lot of state statutes we have to follow, there's a lot of decisions that have to be made, there's some different terminology that goes along with it. So when we ran upon this, Mr. Billingsley actually showed it to me, and I thought it was pretty good. So we thought it'd be a good idea to bring it before you guys, to inform members of the audience, or maybe members of TV that watch the broadcast of the council meetings, to kind of get more familiar and to know that their input does matter when we're developing our budget. So again, this is a real quick presentation. It's pretty neat because it's a cartoon, and it kind of just shows all the pieces of the pie that we have to put together when creating these budgets, so.
Hey Dad, how come the pool wasn't open today?
Well, son, a city or town has a budget it has to follow. Sometimes a pool has to be closed because they need to save money to spend somewhere else, such as for a park, or to keep our community safe with more police and firefighters.
I don't understand. What's a city budget?
Well, imagine the city is like a pizza.
A pizza?
Yeah. Everyone has their favorite kind. You like pepperoni, but Mom likes mushrooms, and your brothers like sausage, right?
Yeah.
Well, imagine you were building a pizza that an entire city or town could enjoy.
That's a lot of cheese.
It sure is. Now, imagine how much this pizza would cost. When managing a city or town budget, some residents think that maintaining our streets is the most important ingredient. Other people might want a pool open every day. That is why we, as residents, have a voice in deciding the most essential ingredients to make a great city or town. But what happens when people want more ingredients, like new parks, extended library hours, or other public resources? Every year by mid-July, each Arizona city and town is required to adopt a balanced budget that reflects their unique community needs. Each resident can have a voice in deciding how the budget will be spent before it's adopted. Just like ordering a pizza, this process depends on input as to what will be on the pizza, its size, and how much we are willing to pay for it.
Oh, I see. It's our city or town, and our input matters.
To find out more about how and when you can participate in the development of your city or town budget process, visit azcitieswork.com.
So I think with that, again, it's a real cute little cartoon that we have, but again, it kind of outlines a lot of the things we have to do, kind of simplifies it and allows us to invite people to let us know what they think, so.
Do you remember the council have anything they'd like to say to Gabe or ask Gabe? No, all I can say is I want to thank the members of my budget committee this year. I know that you might pull your hair out a little bit during this session, and we're not done yet, still working on it. For those of you that haven't turned gray, maybe you will by the end of this session. But includes the manager and Gabe over there with that dark hair. The budget is very important to the community, and people need to understand where our money comes from and how our money is spent, and the time we go through in trying to get it all straightened out so we do have a balanced budget and still provide the services that we have without having to raise our taxes. And that's what we've been trying to do, and that's what we are going to do. Gabe, thank you for that presentation.
Item seven, Consent Agenda. Item 7A, Approval of the County Caliente Casa del Sol Property Owner Association's application for their special event liquor license application to the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control for their casino night event to be held on February 26, 2016, from 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. at the Caliente Clubhouse, 3543 Caliente Boulevard, Florence, Arizona. Item B, Approving the San Tan United Sports Academy's application for their special event liquor license application to the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control for their spring fling community event to be held on March 5, 2016, from noon to 6:00 p.m. at the Anthem at Merle Ranch Community Park, 3313 North Anthem Way, Florence, Arizona. Item C, Approval of Resolution 1577-16, A resolution of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, approving the map of dedication for general drive, requiring the provisions of infrastructure improvements insurance, or withholding the recordation to secure the satisfactory construction, installation, and dedication of required improvements, establishing a deadline for required improvements to be completed, and authorizing execution by the town manager of supporting documents. Item D, Approval of entering into an intergovernmental agreement with the town of Florence Fire Department and Central Arizona College for fire service excellence and the State of Arizona for firefighter 1 and 2 program. Item E, Approval of accepting the register of demands ending December 31, 2015, in an amount of $3,940,444.52. Mayors and members of council, that is your consent agenda for this evening.
Do you remember the council have anything they'd like taken off the consent agenda? Do you remember the audience have anything they'd like taken off the consent agenda? Hearing none, any motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item, new business, item A, Discussion approval disapproval of a board and commission appointment and to authorize the continue to, authorization to continue to accept applications until seats are filled. Mayor, members of council, the town clerk's office did begin advertising the positions for the various boards and commissions in October. To date, these are all of the applications that have been submitted at this time. You will recall that we do have an appointment process that is set up through the code, but at this time, we do not have more individuals applying for seats that are available. So we have brought the applications to you for direct appointment.
Is it appropriate if we can go ahead and do, do we need to approve each of them individually, or can we do them in bulk?
We can do them individually by item, by board.
Okay. You have in your council agenda item packets the appointments that the staff is asking us to make. Start off with item one.
To approve appointment of Chris Reed, Lynn Smith, Betty Wheeler, and Natasha Schmidt to the Historic District Advisory Commission.
Second.
With terms to expire December 31, 2018.
Second.
We have a motion to appoint Chris Reed, Lynn Smith, Betty Wheeler, and Natasha Schmidt to the Historic District Advisory Commission with terms to expire December 31, 2018. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Make a motion to appoint Denise Kohler to the Joint Library Advisory Board with a term to expire December 31, 2017.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Denise Kohler to the Joint Library Advisory Board with a term to expire December 31, 2017. Any other discussion? Call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Make a motion of appointment of Don H. Pinson to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board with a term to expire December 31, 2018.
Second. We have a motion and a second to appoint Don Pinson to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board with a term to expire December 31, 2018. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
I will make a motion of appointment of Gary J. Pronzo, Larry Putrick, and Carl Bell to the Planning and Zoning Commission with a term to expire December 31, 2018.
Second. We have a motion and a second to appoint Gary Pronzo, Larry Putrick, and Carl Bell to the Planning and Zoning Commission with a term to expire December 31, 2018. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Manager, report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I have a number of items to report tonight. You have to bear with me because I don't have bifocals, so I'll be doing probably some adjustments of my glasses so I can see what's going on here. I'll go through these as quick as possible. The first thing, I wanted to recognize Mr. Jason Joines, if you'd like to stand up, Jason. Jason is going to serve in a temporary capacity as our wastewater treatment superintendent for our two wastewater plants. So congratulations, Jason. Secondarily, Mr. Mark Ekoff, Mark, if you'd like to stand, has been appointed to the Population Technical Advisory Committee at MAG. Thank you. Next, Mr. Jason Penrod, is he here? I don't think he's here this evening. I wanted to acknowledge that I attended, actually before I came to work at Florence, I got an advertisement, and Mark gave a brief presentation on it at our last meeting regarding an emergency exercise that we were invited to, that was held at the Akchen, not Akchen, it was held at the San Carlos Apache Casino, I guess about a month and a half ago, and Mr. Penrod attended with Mark and myself. And I challenged Mr. Penrod with catching up regarding his training from the Emergency Management Institute, and I'm happy to report to council this evening that Jason has passed ICS 100, ICS 200, and ICS MAG 300. So I will send your congratulations to Mr. Penrod when I see him next, over his achievement. Next, I wanted to announce to the public that Library Director Ms. Rosemary Beberis has returned to work. She started back to work last Thursday after a 12-week absence. She's been the director of the Florence Community Library for more than 10 years, and we're very happy as a staff to have her back at her post. Next, there was an incident that I wanted to bring to everybody's attention and to congratulate our fire department. I have an email in front of me, I'm going to read a portion of that, and then I'd like to recognize the fire department. On January 8, 2016, the Florence Fire dispatched to Christianson Road at 7:00 p.m. or 1900 hours for a mutual aid response with Coolidge Fire Department for a vehicle that was in the wash with people trapped inside. We responded. On arrival, Coolidge Command met face-to-face with us to formulate a plan for using our bucket truck, which is our ladder truck with a bucket on it, to extricate the victims that were trapped in a rushing river. We positioned for rescue, and we had a safety crew on site. There were two confirmed victims that were trapped in the vehicle, and our fire team, assisted by others, including Coolidge, were able to extricate those folks and get them out safely. So thank you very much to the fire department for your nice work. No one is injured as part of that very complicated exercise, so thank you. Next item, I wanted, we recognized the 20-year anniversary tonight. What you don't know is we recognized two 10-year anniversaries at our management staff meeting last week, and those two folks are Officer Kyle Kaker and Sergeant William Tatlock. They both have been on the force for 10 years, both of them attended basic police training at Carlotta Training Academy at CAC, and we're very lucky to have them part of the department. So thank you, if you'd convey that, chief, to those officers. Last, oh, I guess not last, second to last, from a public works perspective, I need to report to council and to the public, and I know we've done a couple press releases, but the diversion dam road street improvement project has started. The contractor is R.K. Sanders, and he mobilized, or they mobilized on January 25. The project is multi-phase, but this first phase is upgrading an important road, local road, to a major collector. That'll include widening the road, turn lanes, lighting, drainage, curb and gutter, so it'll be a pretty neat project. It's going to take a number of months, as I understand it, to complete that project, but it just got started. Five months? Very good. Second, unfortunately, we had an event at the Southwest Water Treatment Plant two weeks ago where one of our influent pumps malfunctioned. It caused an electrical failure, which caused a backflow onto a property here in town. That's the negative part. The positive part is, very proud of the response that was provided by the Florence Public Works Department. They were immediately on scene. There was sizable commitment from a number of folks, admin, public works, water, sewer, to help out the local property owner and to get our plant back online and working. Some of those folks are here with us today. Jason, please take back to Public Works and to wastewater and to water our thanks for their very quick and professional response, as well as, Ms. Clerk, if you'd take back to the admin staff, there were a number of admin staff that were associated with that response, our thanks to those folks for their efforts in taking a bad situation and trying to make it a little bit better. Lastly, council's probably noticed, and so is the public, that the Southwest Gas Project for reconstructing and upsizing gas lines throughout Florence is ongoing. My understanding is they're in the area of Ruggles and 20th Street at this time, but they're going to be here for a number of months doing upgrades, so you'll see a lot of traffic control and closed streets. And lastly, I wanted to end on a very positive item. Last week, I believe it was Friday, I got the absolute pleasure of attending one of the neatest events that I've ever attended in my 20 years of service in government, and that was 325 East Ruggles Street. We are doing three different community development block grant housing rehab projects. I got to be there on Friday when a lady was handed the keys to her newly repaired, and in this case, expanded in terms of a new home. And a very beautiful job was done by our contractor. Our project managers did an excellent job getting to that point, and it was super neat to be there when she was handed the keys and see how happy she was, how proud our staff was. Gilbert was there, our local media was there taking pictures. It was truly a, really an inspirational moment and something that we should be very, very proud of. I hope that we'll get some positive news coverage and we'll get some press releases out, not only to the local media, but hopefully some of the state media outlets, because that was really neat to be there and to be able to experience that. I also have updates on the other two projects. The second project is 450 North Park Street. The contractor is actually working on the rehab on that project, and they're supposed to start, they're scheduled to start replacing windows and doors this week, in about a month. Similarly, there'll be a handover on that project. And lastly, 1070 East, or 1070 South Orlando, that project has completed demolition and is scheduled to begin pouring concrete later this week. Are there any questions regarding my report? Thank you.
This is second call to the public, same rules apply. She no movement, I'll close call to the public. Call to the council, Bill? I have nothing at this time. Karen?
I just want to reiterate what Kathy Adams said earlier. The events that I've attended at the Library Community Center have been very well organized and very informative and entertaining and educational, so I would encourage anyone to attend them, anything that is of interest.
Don?
I don't have anything tonight.
John?
Yes, I'd like to thank the town manager and also Jason. I went on a tour of our waste facility, and it was quite educational, and those guys are doing a great job down there for us, and I just want to thank them for the tour.
Beck?
I don't have anything.
Karen?
I do, of course. February 13, just to go on, we do have our home tour. It's very exciting. If you have flapperware and want to help out with some home tours, I know that they're looking for assistance with home tours, even if you don't want to dress the part. And then secondly, one of our local police officers, I just wanted to wish him well, has recently just started a retirement. This person is near and dear to our family. He's just right around the corner. He's one of those family neighborhood police officers where when your kids are walking to school, you say, if there's ever a problem, this officer's house. He's done wonders for the community, as all of our officers do. So I want to wish Mr. Sam Pankey well in his retirement.
Thank you. The home tour's coming up. Everybody needs to attend. Also, the plans are being formulated for our celebrations throughout the year. Money is starting to come in, so we do have some funds to put on some different events during the year, celebration of our birthday. Again, it's 150th. Do you get to notice that to the public or anybody when the meetings are?
Mayor, we don't have the next meeting scheduled yet, so as soon as we do, we'll get that out.
Get that out to the public, so anybody that wants to attend can come and listen to their input and see what, maybe they have some different ideas to help us along. But we are planning, and it's starting to come together, so be watching for future announcements as that. Our local paper representative is very much aware of all the advertisements going on, and he's helping us out tremendously, and we really appreciate that. But the money is finally starting to come in, and I do need, I got somebody I need you to contact. I talked to them today. Okay? Now, we're going to go, we're going to have a motion going to executive session. After we adjourn from executive session, we will come back and adjourn from the regular meeting. Need a motion? Move?
I make a motion. We adjourned to executive session.
Second. We have a motion and a second adjourned to executive session. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Folks, we're in executive session.